The CCE meeting to order on October 6, 2020, I should say. Lisa, can you unmute it? Can you call the role?
Sure, I can. Carter?
Present.
Abbas?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Did you hear me?
Nope, didn't hear you Barbara, but go ahead and say hi or here. Alder Skidmore?
You're muted. There you go.
Okay, Alder Hennick? Alder Tierney? Alder Campbell? And Alder Bedar?
She's running late.
Okay, we have a quorum present.
Thank you. And then can everyone mute themselves while our facilitator, please read the meeting instructions?
Yep. All right, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. The chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, panelists will be unmuted briefly, and you do have the ability to unmute yourselves. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You'll remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up after speaking. A member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Carter, the floor is back to you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is item two, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion? Alder Abbas?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Alder Harrington McKinney? You second? It's been moved in second. Second, if there's no objection, I'd like to record a unanimous vote. I see no objections. I will record a unanimous vote for approval of the minutes. Let's move on to item three, public comment. Do we have anyone who is registered?
Yes, we have Barbara Vedder, supporting and wanting to speak, and Neil Crowder, opposing and not wanting to speak.
Okay, let's start out with Barbara.
Barbara is not present in the meeting.
Okay, if she comes on a little bit later, then we'll go ahead and plug her in. Do I have any disclosures or recusals? Okay, I have no disclosures or recusals. We'll move on to item five, 62447. And this is a discussion item. Lisa, can you talk about the procedure and process for this?
Sure, I think everybody could see that I did attach the ordinance that's related to the procedure to fill vacancies on the common council. Many of you recall when there was an amendment to that ordinance by Alder Rummel to change it when it's closer to an election day. So since this doesn't fall before that January date, we're going to have to go through the full process of asking people to submit resumes and everything else, and then having executive committee meet, interview, and then recommend somebody to the common council. There's different scenarios on how quickly you want that to happen. Tonight, if you decide on the timeline, I would be able to put out a press release tomorrow about the application process, and then have that application process probably open for about two weeks to like the 21st of October. And then maybe, depends on when executive committee can meet again. It looks like maybe Thursday, the 29th, or Friday, October 30th. And I'm not sure how quickly executive committee would like to seat somebody. We could possibly seat somebody on the first night of the budget meeting, on the 10th, or you can wait till your next regularly scheduled meeting on the 17th. So those are the discussions I think that you need to have in terms of the timeline.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone want to start out the discussion? I think that the sooner the better. Alder Hennick? You can unmute yourself. Thank you.
I think that there's a significant responsibility that we have to be able to put somebody in place by the budget hearing. I think it makes a lot of sense to give the residents of that district a voice throughout our budget process, especially in a difficult budget year. And I think that that would be an important deadline to meet.
Okay, thank you. Alder Campbell, you can unmute yourself.
I have a question for Attorney Haas. Attorney Haas, so Lisa attached the part of the MGO that says what the procedure is to fill vacancies. But are we, do we by law have to fill the vacancy?
No, there was actually a change to the statute last year to clarify, maybe earlier this year, that rewrote the vacancy statute and clarified that under the state statute at least, the council could fill it by appointment, call a special election, or leave it vacant. So under the state statute, it's not required.
So would you say we have two options here? Either leave it vacant or fill it per our procedures?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'd like us to have a discussion about those two options.
Attorney, oh, thank you, Alder Campbell. Attorney Haas, is there... Is, did you say the third option was to hold a special election?
Right, yes.
So there's three options?
Yeah, you know, there are. I mean, the special election, the caveat there is that you have to have 70 days between the time candidates are determined in the election. So the timing gets a little bit squeezed.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure. Alder McKinney?
Okay.
Your hand is up?
Yes, thank you. I'm trying to lighten me a little bit, but I'm not able to do that. I wanted to add for general discussion is that that district deserves representation, and I would want the alders to consider that. And we have a former alder, Moreland, who lives in the district, and I'm sure she has quite a bit of influence. But it would be a shame that the voices of that district was not represented. And as we look at the democratic process, that's something that I would not be comfortable with. I mean, that person is coming in at a disadvantage, but I would hope that with the assistance of the former alder, that designated person would get up to speed. But again, we're looking at having representation at the council from that district. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Foster?
Thank you. Question for staff and may not be able to answer it on the spot here, I guess, but just wondering kind of what our historical practice has been. I think just in kind of my short memory, I feel like we've done it kind of both ways. And in the case where we haven't filled it, we've asked another alder to cover those additional constituents. So I guess just kind of curious about what our track record has been, and does the amount of time left in the term have any influence on what we've done in the past?
Lisa, I think that's directed towards you, although, am I right? Alder Foster?
Yeah, I mean, council staff, and like I said, I'm sure it's going to be a little tough to answer it precisely right now, but just trying to...
Okay. Lisa, I think that was directed towards you.
So are you talking about if the position was left vacant? We have that process where the president is able to sign off on things during that vacancy. So if there was some sort of conditional use or development, I mean, the council president can handle that. I think we had that change when Alder Balday was council president.
I think I'm thinking somewhat recently that there was like District 15 alder covered for District 3 when that alder resigned.
Yeah, and I think that happened when Alder Balday was president. And then we changed, I think we, it must have been done by an ordinance where they could, the president or probably a designee could handle those issues. So that's also a possibility. Depends on how the council feels about leaving that vacant till April.
In your kind of memory, was that a one-off where we did that sort of covering it, or have we done it other times as well?
That is, that's kind of a one-off for a vacancy. We've had it where we've had maybe an alder going to be out for two weeks or whatever, and they've asked the alder that's been contiguous to them that they help out during that time where maybe they're not able to. They're two weeks out, you know, in another country or whatever. That has happened in the past. But in terms of a vacancy, I think it was only that time when we had that District 3, kind of that little bit of time where we didn't have an alder, and so District 15 was able to step in.
And Attorney Haas, you had mentioned, oh, sorry, I had one other question. I can wait.
Oh, go ahead, and then I'll, I have a question too. Go ahead. Alder Foster?
Thanks. Yeah, Attorney Haas, you had mentioned the requirements around a timeline for calling a special election. So let's say if that were the goal, and it seems a little bit odd to do that in advance of a spring election, but like what, where would that put us in terms of a timeline? If our goal was to do a special election rather than an appointment, what would kind of be the soonest we could hold that election?
Well, there would need to be an order, first of all, passed by the council to set the date for a special election. And then, of course, you need to allow some time to circulate nomination papers. Typically, we used to see the shortest period of time was generally a week. Typically, it was a little bit longer than that. You know, being much shorter than what you have for regular elections. So you have to build in enough time to have that 70, have the nomination papers submitted, and the clerk have time to review the signatures and the challenge process. I mean, that all takes a couple of weeks, and the end of that process has to fall at least 70 days prior to the date of the special election. So you're really, you know, probably building in, in addition to the 70 days, probably at least a couple of weeks after the council would order the election. So overall, maybe you're talking about 90 to 100 days in advance of the date for a special election. You also have to remember that you cannot have a special election between February 1st and the date of the spring election. There's a blackout period.
So the only option there would be maybe sometime in January if we sort of move forward with this, and then that, that would be, they would take office and then would need to run again in April?
Right.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No, my hand should be down.
Okay, thank you. So Lisa, if I recall correctly, we did do interviews when Alder Estridge left. There was eight months left to her, if I remember, there was eight months left to her term. And there is eight months left again today with Alder Moreland's term. In those situations where we have, well, a little bit less than a year to go, have we used the interview process for that?
Well, yes, I mean, we have used the interview process for those shorter terms. And I think, you know, what I think is kind of difficult in this situation is if you were to do those interviews, you're kind of sitting somebody for a budget that they haven't had any, you know, if they were to be appointed on budget night, have they had any real time to go through the budget and to work on the budget? You know, the only other option would be maybe to call a special council meeting on the 4th, 5th, or 6th in order to seat this person. Remember, November 3rd is the election day. I think, you know, it depends on how the council feels about wanting to seat somebody for those months that are going to be vacant. I mean...
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, it's roughly six months of time where that seat won't have anybody representing it. So, I mean, I think that's something you all need to discuss.
And do we, do we know of any former alders in that district? I know Stephen King travels a lot, so I'm not necessarily looking at him because he does travel extensively, but any other alders from that district?
I don't know if Libby Monson's still over there. But I know former alder King is actually working remotely from Phoenix, so I'm not sure if he would feel comfortable subbing in at this time, so...
Right, I wasn't really looking at Alder King because I know how much he travels and does other things. Okay.
You know, the other thing is maybe asking one of the county supervisors to step in and fill in for those tasks. But, I mean, when we were coterminous, that was a much easier process. But we're not coterminous any longer.
Yep. Thank you for that. Alder Evers?
Thank you, thank you, President. I just want to, I don't... Sorry about that. I'm in my kitchen cooking dinner here right now. So I'm getting ready for our council meeting tonight. I don't like to be thought of as someone who sits back only to correct the president, but it was in August of 2018 that alder Sarah Eskridge stepped down. I actually participated in that, and I believe it was in the second, first or second week of August that those CCE meetings happened. So that was eight months. Now is six months, less than six months, I believe. Since the election will be the first week of April, by the time we're able to counsel, CCEC could have this meeting, it'll be less than six months. So, thanks. That's all.
Alder Abbas?
So, I'm going to share my thought process, and I appreciate for having, we are having this discussion and thinking through this. So every aldermanic district is different, and every district has its own challenges and community and issues. Sometimes we have an issue which impact the overall city. And like, we can see in this budget, like MPD and mental health and homelessness. There's a lot of issue which will impact overall whole city, and we need representation to address those. Then we come to a smaller scale, your scale of representation, because you represent a district. So I'm going to put myself in a shoe, and I'm going to give you examples. So the district which I represent, we have issue with environmental justice, environmental racism, F-35, Oscar My special area plan, Oscar My contamination, bus project, public market, affordable housing. Then we have discussion around housing first. And then we have a drug house, which I am dealing on Myrtle Street, then on Cooley Street, then on Adal Street. So my thinking is the representation is needed. If, let's say if I leave a district, I'm just putting myself. I think so it's better served if we have some alder, sorry for the background. Kids are crying in the background. So I think so it's better served if we have an alder who can represent and take care of those issues beside budget or greater discussion. Dividing those responsibilities to other orders, we're still debating on October 8th, we're going to have that discussion about full-time and the part-time council.
Right, Alder McKinney, how do I write my screen?
Can you mute yourself, Alder McKinney? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought I was.
Well, now you're back now. Okay, no, no, you need, thank you.
Yeah, so we already having that discussion around either we need a full-time council or part-time council, and one of the things we can all understand, the job requirement as an effective city council member required a lot of time and commitment and also engagement with your constituents. So the best, again, I'm not an expert on this subject, but just speaking through my experience, I think so it better serve if we have somebody represent Donna as an alder, not sharing responsibility on other orders. And we are, you know, we have so many things coming forward in council where we need a lot of energy. So that's my recommendation. I would be much more preferred to have an interview process. I will not really, I'm not really in a favor of a special election because if we do special election, we have to do election again in April. And knowing about how much, from sustainability point of view, how much it, and the energy and the money and the stuff cost. And my election cost me, I raised $10,000, $11,000, almost cost around $8,000 to $9,000 in a very competitive race. So it's better to have somebody for a shorter period of time, and in April, we can have election just like what we have with alder Mr. Giacomo. He went through election process afterwards the seat was open. So that's my thought process. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Alder Foster, and then Alder Furman?
Thanks, I'll be brief. I just wanted to, I guess, speak to the question of representation. And I think there's at least two components to that, you know, one, representing for the people that elected you in terms of representing their beliefs and values, et cetera. And then the second is sort of this constituency services and the actual work that I think, you know, Alder Abbas was describing. You know, I agree on the second point in terms of, you know, there can be a lot of work. And I don't know if all districts are the same, but there certainly is always, you know, plenty of work to do that's specific to your district. Although a lot of the work also is just in terms of the board committee commission meetings, et cetera. But in terms of the representation, you know, representing your constituency in terms of values, et cetera, you know, I really struggle with that being accomplished by the council selecting an individual. I mean, I think that's where the challenge for me is that it really does sort of shortcut that. And having us select someone to represent a district, you know, it doesn't lead to the same kind of representation that a vote does. So I think that's the piece that really gives me pause, particularly when we're talking about oh, trying to rush and do this and get somebody in for budget. I mean, the idea that somebody that we appoint is going to then sort of magically represent a district, you know, I just, I honestly don't quite see it. I think it then really comes down to who do we pick, which can really set up some weird dynamics. And, I mean, if that person is sworn in on the night of budget, the idea that they're going to somehow have had access to and be able to represent the perspectives and views of the people in their district who didn't vote for them in the budget hearing just doesn't really, doesn't make a ton of sense to me, honestly. So my biggest concern is just that, you know, I think particularly when we talk about getting somebody in for a budget vote, you know, that makes me a little bit uneasy for us to do that instead of the constituents. So, you know, those are my concerns with it. I understand the intent, but in particular, if we don't find someone who was a previous alder or a county soup or something like that, the idea that someone who doesn't have this experience could step in and be thrown into a budget hearing and operate in a decent way, that doesn't even sound fair to me. So, yeah, those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. So I think that part of what Lisa was saying is, if we want that person in by budget, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, that's just one option. The next option is if we want them in, it doesn't necessarily have to be by budget. So I don't want it to be tied to the budget. It sounds like most people are saying not by budget, but that's what I'm hearing. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to point out that, you know, we obviously talked a little about history. I mean, we have an example literally from last year where the District 8 alder resigned on September 30th, 2019, which is the exact same day Alder Moreland resigned. That, we asked for, we asked for applications by October 14th. October 15th, there was a review of process details at a CCEC meeting. And the week of October 21st, there was a special CCEC meeting, according to press release I'm reading. And then the replacement was put in place on November 5th, 2019. So there's certainly a timeline for this council in very recent history to go ahead and fill the seat, and fill the seat quickly at this time of year. I would like to see where, you know, the seat filled. I think there are questions on whether or not it's before or after the budget because we're close. But I did at least want the record to be clear that we did this exact thing last year. Thank you.
Wow. Alder Campbell?
Yeah.
And then Alder McKinney after Alder Campbell. Go ahead. Alder Campbell?
I hear you. I appreciate Alder Foster for breaking that down, those two parts of representation, because that's, well, constituent services really need to be maintained. That whole question of representation and who chooses the representation, and if we choose the representation, it's not really democratic representation for that district at all. And it being so, you know, we're about to get into campaign season, and it being so close to the next election, you know, which wasn't the case. Wait, what am I, what am I thinking? Anyway, no, I'm thinking of, you know, Alder Schmidt when Alder Schmidt resigned. Anyways. But I think that there are two main issues for me about us appointing someone for this seat. And the one is that, you know, they wouldn't really represent the views of the people in that district. And the other one is that we would, in effect, be giving them the power of incumbency for the upcoming election. And, you know, not to name names, but in two of the instances where we named people for the seat, where the council chose people for that seat, they had indicated that they likely would not run for that seat, and they did, and they won. And so that, for me, that... would not run for that seat and they did and they won. And so that, for me, that's, it's a huge problem that the council can, you know, anoint someone not only for, you know, to, for a short-term representation, but then in a campaign season, bestow them with the power of, of incumbency. So I, I'm really concerned about that. I agree that if, if we didn't appoint someone, we would collectively need to figure out how to handle their constituent services. And if we do make a majority decision to appoint someone, I would be strongly in favor of us amending that ordinance to say that if, if we appoint someone during, you know, within, within six or nine months or, you know, I'm just throwing a, a number out there of an election, that they would be ineligible to run for office in that next election.
Thank you, Alder Kimball. And I do believe, Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Alder Bedar, you've been here long enough, you might be able to correct me. But that used to be in the requirements that they would not run for office, I believe, was, because I remember us changing it to say is not taken, you wouldn't lose points if you, go ahead, Alder Bedar, is that why your, your hand is up? I will let you, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, President Carter. I think I'm the one that's been here for many of these moments. So whatever that experience brings. So what we heard from Attorney May is that we can kind of state that and ask people on the record to tell us whether they would or would not intend to run, but we have no way to make that an obligation. That was his reading of, of kind of the legal issues. He very clearly stated to us that we can, we can again ask them and make our decisions based on our, what we hear from those candidates during the time of, of interviewing. But people are free to still decide to do whatever they want to do as, as far as citizens who want to run for election and that we cannot legally prohibit them from running for office. So that was again Attorney May's interpretation of, of the law. So I don't know if Attorney Haas would have a different interpretation, but we asked him this question a number of, of different times when we had vacancies.
Attorney May, do you have, do you want to add to that? Of the, I mean, I'm sorry, Attorney Haas.
Okay, we all, we all look the same, us attorneys. So, no, that's.
Thank you for clarifying that.
That, that, I mean, that's what immediately struck me. I don't think you can have a condition that somebody gives up their right to seek office if they're appointed. You can ask them if they're interested. I, you know, I, I'm hesitating about whether or not to provide this input because I want to make it clear, it's, it's not legal, okay? And it really comes from my experience with the Elections Commission. You can disregard it if you want, but it's always struck me that, to say that you do not, I understand the inclination to say you don't, you don't want to give, and somebody a leg up as the incumbent in a race, but at the same time to say that you would like somebody who's not interested in running when you want somebody who is representative of the district. It seems to me you could certainly make an argument that you do want to have people who are interested in serving long-term and have expressed that commitment and they may be more likely to be representative of the district and, and to be in tune and pay attention to those, you know, to, to the, the needs of the constituents. So I also have to, you know, it's a bias from working for, you know, 12 years with the Elections Commission towards having elected offices filled and not having a, an extended vacancy. I mean, the statutes recognize, it's a reality. We have vacancies. Both the statutes and the ordinance have recognized that vacancies occur and that's why there's a procedure to fill them. It's certainly up to the council about, you know, whether you want to take advantage of that or not. So I, I appreciate you indulging me and letting me express that. But, you know, I've, I've just heard this discussion many times throughout the state about whether or not to fill an office and, and those are sometimes the, the factors that come into play.
Okay, thank you. Alder McKinney, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to circle back to the, the question that was asked, do you intend to run? And if that person says that they're not intending to run, but in the process of serving the community, they choose to, there's always going to be a square on their back for that. And so maybe that, that is a question that no longer has merit because legally, we're not able to do that. But I really do want to circle back to the fact that we have a district and we have residents within that district. And I go back to the Vice President saying is that beyond the budget, there are issues. And so for the residents to feel that they don't have a voice at the table in the room, we really must consider that. And so it is a budget, but really it is larger than the budget. Because if there is a problem that needs to be resolved, then the residents would expect to have someone to call and to go to. And the second part of my question is, is that has there been any communication with the other elected official who serves in that district?
I don't think at this time we've done that because we wanted to discuss it here.
Okay, would that be an option?
So I think that if I recall that Lisa did mention Dane County Supervisor could sit in on this, sit in on that seat until the end of the, the term. So, but we haven't made that decision yet. Okay.
Not, not recommending that that person sit in on that seat, but that person would know the district well and could help navigate who might be interested. So I wasn't advocating for the, for that chair to sit in, but to, to know the district well enough to make some recommendations.
And I would think that her opponent would be interested considering that they tried to run before. Alder Kimball, then Alder Bedar.
Oh no, I just forgot to lower my hand.
Alder, oh, okay. 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 So it, it sounds like we are really, haven't really come to a consensus on whether we should set up interviews, whether we should have, invite, I guess, the Dane County Supervisor to come in and sit in that seat, or whether we should leave it vacant. What I hear, now I have all kind of hands. Anyway, what I hear is that we're still, we're still discussing this and I want to go on to the Chief of Staff. So we'll take the last three and then we're gonna go on to the Chief of Staff. Alder Turney, and you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, President Carter. I, I guess I would just echo what Alder Hennec had said, Alder Abbas had alluded to earlier. I, I think we simply should put out a, a press release saying that if you're interested in serving as alder, you know, send in a resume. Presumably, people may also wish to have residents of the district do letters of support, what have you. I think we ought to take steps to fill the position prior to the budget. I think that persons that are interested, if we, I have a deadline for getting resumes in, I, I would not imagine it would be a large group of people. The operating budget is out. The capital budget is out. So that person can clearly review those documents and try to get up to speed. You know, all the, all the candidates could do that. And no, I, I just think it's just fundamental that we're in a representative democracy. The budget we vote on in November is going to have some pretty significant implications and the people that reside in that district deserve to have somebody at the table voting on their behalf. So that, that's my take.
Okay, thank you. Alder Abbas, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. I understand the point, Alder Kimball mentioned and also Alder Foster. I think so that's also valid point about, you know, if somebody's elected through votes, that's a, that's a right representation. But having said that, we are going through really tough time in the history with COVID-19, with unemployment, with a lot of issues. Those issues which we usually don't see in our district are happening. And, and the representation is really, really, really required at, at really local level, engaging with your constituent and also taking their voices to come and counsel as well as solving on a staff level. Also, you know, council job is more like volunteer job, but a lot of us is working as a full-time. So it's a lot of work if we decide to shift that work among other orders, that can be significant amount of work. And I'm not, I'm not aware about order, I'm just creating assumption here, Moreland District, I, I'm not aware how much work, what issues are there commonly discussed or they are facing. So I will also, as Alder Turney said, I will support an interview process. And once we go through DFOCs process, hopefully by then, these things will be all ironed out and might be the structure of the council will be completely changed. So at that time, we can really think through it and see how our council structure through on the discussion on October 8th. Thanks.
Okay, Alder Hennec and then?
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna mention, I'm unmuted, right? Yes. I was just gonna mention that when we look at past appointments, turning into elected positions, that we could look at that two different ways. We could look at it as anointed or we could look at it that, that really good decisions were made that were supported by the residents. And I, I think I would lean towards the, the latter, that, you know, good appointments were made that did represent their communities and did a really good job. And, and then also that was confirmed by the residents by getting elected. So I, I think that, yes, there are some, some questions there, but I think that the side of representation versus no representation, I'm always gonna lean towards representation.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yes, you can. Go ahead.
So I, I would like to move that we move forward with a, a appointment process and target to have that person in place by the, the start of the budget hearing.
Alder Tierney?
I would second that.
Second, okay, it's been moved and properly second. Are there any objections to me registering a unanimous vote? Alder Kimball? Then I, I take it that you object, Alder Kimball. Okay. Alder Abbas?
I am not objecting. I'm gonna vote in a favor, but at the same time, I do think so. Again, this is my personal opinion. We should hire that person after the finance, after the budget adoption.
After the budget production?
Yes, on November 17th, common council meeting. And there are several, we already argued about that, there are several reasons behind it. So that's, that's only my comment, but I will vote in favor with that addition of the command. Thanks.
Okay, wonderful. Lisa, can you register Alder Kimball as opposed? Okay, thank you. Let's go on to Chief of Staff. Oh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Just one confirmation was the added statement from Vice President Abbas added to the, the process, the vote. Okay, because I.
He didn't make it as a amendment to it. Do, is, and the vote's already been taken. But Alder Abbas, is that what, I thought that was just a comment.
It's a comment, but I, 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 I will request as a friendly amendment if, to my colleagues, if they can concede hiding somebody at September. I know we already voted, but that's, that's, that's my comments.
So Attorney Haas, do we have to reopen the vote for that? I did say Haas this time. Oh, there you are.
And I apologize for not being clear. Sorry for that.
I, I think that would have to, now, since the vote was taken, I think that would have to be a separate motion.
Okay. Attorney, I mean, Alder Abbas, you're gonna have to make a separate motion.
Yeah, can I make a motion to hire that person after the budget session, appointment on common council on November 17th meeting?
We have to reconsider first?
Okay.
Right?
No, this is a separate, a mo-, a separate motion.
But we've already taken the vote on this.
So, I, I think we may need to clarify exactly what the motion was that was passed.
Right. Sure. The motion was made by Alder Hennec, seconded by Alder Tierney, to move forward with the application process and have someone seated by November 10th. And there was a, a vote with Alder Kimball voting no.
Yeah, I, I think given that the timing was specifically in there, I, I guess I would agree with Lisa at this point. It would have to be reconsidered to, to adopt a new, a new timing.
Okay. So now we will reconsider the motion?
If there is a motion to reconsider.
And that's what you want to do, Alder Abbas, is reconsider the last motion?
Can I do that? Yes.
Yes, you can.
Motion to reconsider, please.
And I, do I have a second? Alder, it's been moved improperly seconded by Abbas and seconded by Alder McKinney. So we, so we'll have a discussion and if you can.
I can briefly really talk about it. We, you know, November 10th, through application process, I'm sure all the candidates who will apply, they will try to read their notes, but they will not have access to their Outlook email address. And there might be 500, 1,000, I don't know, God knows how many emails will be there to really understand. I think so budget process is very, very complicated and it's gonna be a lot of back and forth communication with constituent. There's, this is tricky situation, but I do think so. That person coming into council without having access to all those emails, communication might make things much more complicated. It's better for us to hire that person on 17th. So the person have, can start a vote with constituent stayed away. I think so. During the budget, without any experience, it's gonna be, I, I have some reservation with that, but that's why I want, I propose this.
So it would be the same motion, but the date would be the 17th instead of?
10th.
The 10th, okay. Alder Hennec?
Yes, Lisa, if we, just looking at the timeline, what would be the soonest if we called a, a special meeting that we could have someone seated?
Well, the soonest we could do that, if we, if we weren't looking at budget, would be the 17th of November. So I think, you know, part of it is we do not have a meeting on the first Tuesday in November because it's Election Day. And so the 10th, 11th and 12th are your budget meetings. And then the 17th is your next regularly scheduled. There's one on October 20th, but there's no way unless you really shorten up that, I mean, you'd really have a short application time. I think it's been the past practice of executive committee and organizational committee to have kind of that two-week time period for people to apply. But, you know, if you only want to do it till Monday, I, you know, that's up to you guys. I, I'm not gonna say anything. I'm not gonna say anything. You know, you could really fast-track it and have it, you know, have a special executive committee meeting. So, I mean, it's up to you all what you want to do.
If we want them, if we want this decision by November 17th, is there a way that you can work the calendar so that decision will be made by the 17th? I think is what Abbas is saying.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, Alder McKinney? Okay. Alder Hennig?
Yeah, I do feel that-
And Alder Bedare afterwards.
That having someone seated for the budget, if there's a way to get them, you know, sooner than that, I think that would be great. But I do feel like that is, you know, basically our main priority as alders. And to not have someone for that district to be able to represent people, I think is very difficult. I do also understand that the difficulty with not having access to the email account. I'm not sure if anyone has ideas on how we might address that.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Bedare. You can unmute yourself.
I keep forgetting. Thank you, President Carter. I agree with Vice President Abbas's thinking of November 17th and post-budget. I do understand and know that budget is a very important part of, a critical part of our work. But I do, and again, knowing that, yes, indeed, last year, we had a situation in which we did have somebody come on board right before the budget. It was extremely challenging and difficult. And so I think that November 17th and process that leads us to the appointment by that date is really appropriate, and I hope we can support it. Again, I do think not having access to a lot of information and background and having, pulling somebody in in the next, budget starts actually with our discussions next week.
So they will be seated by November 17th, correct? So-
Yeah, I think that is the thought process.
Okay, so Lisa, can you repeat the motion with the new date so we can take a vote on that?
Sure, and I just wanted to know who seconded Alder Abbas's motion?
Barbara McKinney.
Okay, so the motion is to go through with the application process and to have someone seated by November 17th, an appointment made to the council by November 17th.
Okay, thank you. Alder Kimball, are you still in opposition for that?
Yeah, I'm in opposition of us appointing someone so close to an election.
Okay. So will you record Alder Kimball as opposed?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm sorry, but we're not voting on that yet. We're voting on reconsideration.
Reconsideration, sorry.
Opposed to reconsideration, so don't mark me as opposed to reconsideration.
Okay. So now we go back to, where do we go from here? I'm so confused. Do we go back to the original motion?
So the motion to reconsider was approved, is that correct? And then Alder Abbas made a motion to go through with the application process and to have someone by November 17th, seconded by Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you. Is there any objection to me recording a unanimous vote to seating a new alder by November 17th?
I don't think we actually voted to reconsider yet, did we?
I don't know. I'm assuming-
I did not hear a vote to reconsider. I might have missed it, but I don't think there was a-
I think there was a motion to reconsider.
There was a motion to reconsider, and I asked if Alder Kimball was opposed to it. And she said, I'll let you repeat that, Alder Kimball, because I don't want to put words in your mouth.
You asked me if I was opposed to having an alder appointed by November 17th, but that wasn't the question before us. So I was not opposed to reconsideration.
Okay, so-
Opposed to us appointing an alder. So we need to vote on that, and then we did not have a motion for the November 17th item yet.
Okay, so let's take a roll call vote for reconsideration.
Alder Carter?
Yes.
Alder Abbas?
Yes.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes.
Alder Skidmore?
Yes.
Alder Hennig?
Yes.
Alder Tierney?
Yes.
Alder Kimball?
Aye.
Okay, motion to reconsider passed.
And now the motion is to change the date to November 17th by me.
And can I get a second? Alder McKinney? Okay, so we discussed that date several times, being the 17th. Lisa, can you read the motion?
For Alder Abbas move to proceed with the application process and to have an interim alder seated by the November 17th common council meeting, seconded by Alder Harrington McKinney.
And is there any objection to me recording a unanimous vote? Alder Kimball? Please mark Alder Kimball as opposed. And the motion passes. Thank you, Alder Kimball. Let's move on to the Chief of Staff, and we actually will probably have to do another meeting regarding this. And maybe it can be a short, special meeting if we can get that in before our next meeting. We'll have to look at the calendar if Lisa can do it. Has everyone been able to at least peruse the position description? As we all know, that Chief of Staff Quazy, it will be last day, I believe, is November 13th or that. Yeah, November 13th is his last day. So we need to really discuss the Chief of Staff, not only the position description on what you want to see added or deleted, but also whether we want to go forward with having a Chief of Staff. Alder Harrington McKinney?
My question, when I reviewed the job descriptions, is there going to be an exit interview?
There should be an exit interview, and we do have Harper here too, who can give us the HR protocol too.
Sure, thank you. In regards to the exit interview, we definitely can make that available. I'd be happy to reach out to Quasi and have someone meet with him.
Okay, that would be my request.
Sure.
Anybody else? So Lisa, can you tell me what was the timeline when we did this back in, I believe, 2017-ish?
Sure, I just sent the hiring timeline that we had back in 2017. We actually started that process in June, but that was starting from scratch with the, you know, development of the position description and everything else. It took us from June 23rd until about December 5th. So it was basically a six-month process. I assume if you continue with the hiring of a council chief of staff, that process will be shortened up. I'm not sure if you're gonna need a resume screening panel, if you're gonna need a first interview panel. You know, you're definitely gonna need a second interview panel of the executive committee. So I think you're gonna have to have that discussion, not only of the position description, but then also that whole process. Like I said, that was our first time out, so I think it did take us a little bit longer to do. And I think Harper can probably speak to that better than I can of kind of the hiring timeline for something like this.
Sure, so I think the most important part, President Carter, you had mentioned that there needs to be discussion in regards to whether or not you all even want to go forward with filling that position. So I think that's, that should probably be the primary goal of the CCEC. But from there, what we would tend to do with a position at this level is that we would meet with Quasi, have him review that position description with expectation that no one knows exactly what he was doing better than him. So there's some certain things that he may want to add, or certain things that he may think aren't necessary. He would review that with the track changes feature. From there, it'd probably be a good idea to share that information with the CCEC. You all may want to open that up for feedback to other council members. And once we get some clarity in regards to exactly what it is you all want, the posting part would be pretty easy. Like Lisa had mentioned, it'd be good to set aside some folks as subject matter experts to review the supplemental questions. You want to have that first round. I believe you all, the way you all did, I'm not sure how you selected folks three years ago, but I think the final interview was with the CCEC. So six months, I don't think it would take that long, but after a decision is made how you all want to go forward, I definitely think we could probably get this accomplished within three or four months.
Three or four, okay, thank you. Alder Abbas?
Yeah, a quick question either for you or either for HR. So the first panel interview, before we go on a first panel interview, what is the process? Do we need to do a resolution? Of course, we will bring this job description in front of the CCEC to review the job description. And once we all agree with the job description, do we need to do a resolution? And can, and also, second question is, first interview panel, can council president appoint four people? Or this is something we need to come to CCEC to decide who's gonna sit on the first interview panel? And I know you already mentioned panel two will be executive committee. So if you can answer both questions, would be great.
Sure, as far as making updates to the aspect, I don't see why there need to be a resolution to do that. I can just, we can, I'll have someone assigned to work with council president, and we can just take the feedback from you. But, and then we can go from there with the posting. And as far as selecting who's going to be on the different panels or even reviewing of supplemental questions, we would take the direction from the council president as well. And I assume that there would be some input from the CCEC.
Thanks for clarification, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. So Stefan, how much time? Can I go like five more minutes?
Yeah, yeah, we just need a hard stop at 6:00 PM to switch over to the common council meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So I believe that the last time we had screeners, am I right, Lisa? Go ahead.
We had resume screen participants, so we had three alders on that. And then we had four subject matter experts on the resume screen, resume screen. And then on the first interview panel, we had three alders and four subject matter experts. So we had alders involved, and not necessarily on executive committee. So we had alders involved in all the way through the process.
So I wasn't here, I wasn't involved three years ago, but I would imagine the initial screening would be done in HR, screening for minimum qualifications. And then from there is when I believe the alders would be involved. And I'm thinking that there was some type of request sent out for volunteer for different states.
Yes.
That's true, that's true. Alder Furman, I don't see you, but I know you're there. Oh, there you are.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I appreciate some of the discussion about the different ways we can do the process on filling the position. But would hope that CCEC can instead, if we're going to six, focus a little bit on, focus more on the job description and then even if we want that position. Because obviously, there are dozens of different ways we can talk about filling the position. But I think, you know, time would be better spent actually talking about the job description as well as, obviously, if we want to fill that position.
That's true, and that's why I wanted to get the HR questions out, because Harper's with us. And we might need a second meeting, if possible, to really get down to a deep dive into the position description and whether or not we want to go forward. Alder Kimball, you're up.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm all for having another meeting and doing that deep dive because Quazy and Harper spent considerable effort earlier this year in, you know, doing a self-assessment for that position, aggregating survey data that we provided on that position. There's a lot of material underlying, underlying a potential decision here that got stalled in March. So we were ready to, I mean, when Quazy was still, still, you know, working for us and not having another job yet, we were still thinking of revisiting this position description. And I think that that's not a discussion that those of us who happen to be here at 5:36 can really have in a good way, that we should make a special meeting so that all alders can, we can come back up to speed on all that information and all the work that they had done earlier this year. And then talk about, you know, since then, for example, we passed a resolution making the Chief of Staff head of this BCC Administrative Services team. So things have already evolved, and I think we just need more time as a whole council to discuss.
So outside of the CCEC?
Well, it could be a CCEC, but just special notice to all alders.
Oh, yeah, like we normally do.
Yeah, but really special notice that, of course, everyone's allowed to come, but that this would, will be the only topic of a CCEC meeting.
Yep, that's what I had planned to do when I had mentioned going into another meeting for a deep dive, so thank you very much. Alder Abbas?
Yeah, and I think so that's a good idea to have a special meeting and only focus on job description. And also creating some sort of timeline after that discussion when we want to hire. So because after leaving Quazy, there's a lot of workload on council staff and also with TFOCs. There also, Quazy was involved with TFOCs, and Karen is involved, so there's a lot of work in future coming forward. So we should keep this as a priority instead of three months. We should, not to rush, I don't mean to rush, but also keep some sort of deadline so we can achieve there and expedite the process. With this job, or with different job, or however we want to structure after that discussion. That is it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, back to Alder Kimball? No, okay. Okay, great. So Lisa and I will work on getting, oh, Harper, hi.
I just also want to mention something else for discussion. In the meantime, after Quasi leaves and his position is vacant, you also should probably discuss whether or not it'd be worthwhile to have someone in the interim capacity serve. Just something to give thought to.
Okay, thank you. So Lisa, you and I will look at a date that we can use for a special meeting for the Chief of Staff position description and position. And also, I wanted to tell you that at the November 20th meeting, trying to get my notes here, at the November 20th meeting, we will have a couple things going on.
November 20th meeting?
I mean, October 20th, I'm sorry. The public health will be coming to talk about violence prevention. And we also, Sarah will be coming to talk, Sarah Edgerton will be coming to talk to us. will be coming to talk, Sarah Edgerton will be coming to talk to us on the 20th also. And what was that, Lisa, the virtual?
So we, well, we have the, so you want the violence prevention from Public Health on the 20th, the Zoom changes by Sarah Edgerton, but I also had a request from Planning to do a presentation and an update on the recovery plan. So I think you're gonna be full on the-
That, that might take more than an hour. Alder Hennig?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we have a net talking about performance excellence and how that's coming along on the, on the schedule sometime in the future?
Yep.
Perfect.
I think we'll have to check in with staff on that to see. They had been providing updates to the Common Council and I think those kind of got dropped for a while due to COVID, so.
I know, I was speaking with staff and they were saying that, that they thought that was on the, the schedule, so I just wanted to bring it up and make sure we follow up on it.
Yeah, that might be nice to have them present to all of council. If there's not, Alder Hennig? Do you have more? Okay. In that case, can I get a motion to adjourn and? Alder Hennig?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Oh, it's been moved and seconded? If, if there's not any, Alder Hennig, your hand is up again?
Same one.
If, if, if there are no objections for me to record that as a unanimous vote? Okay, thank you all, we'll see you in 45 minutes.